...of the United States of America and to the rebellion for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody here today. I'd like to start off by saying a congratulations to Mr. Wade Hill and Red Taylor. Both of these individuals became grandpas again this week.
Granddaughters?
Yeah, granddaughters. So, congratulations. Do we have, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we need to pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
We got a motion by Johnny and a second by Wade to pay the bills. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, first item of business on our agenda is Jimmy Durham presenting the DeKalb County Economic Development Authority along with representatives from the Economic Development Partnership of Alabama. So Jimmy, if you would come.
All right, thank you. You have to, you know, where of especially all of our utility companies and city employees. We've been working on a project, the, what we call the I-59 Fort Payne Industrial Site, which is located just north of Ferguson. And one of the things today is when companies are looking for sites, they want to be able to start immediately building. Used to, they might could wait two or three months and stuff, but they want the due diligence done on the site so they could come in immediately and start work. So that's what we have been working on for the past two or three years. We were able to get some grant money from TBA that allowed us to build a pad, and that pad has been completed. And hopefully now we'll be attracting some new suppliers and industries in. I think we're very fortunate. Timing is good because of the announcement of Toyota and Mazda in Huntsville. And with them, depends on what they want to do with their suppliers, but there'll be some suppliers that do not want to be, that, you know, they serve other OEMs. And you look where Fort Payne is, we have now Toyota, Mazda, we have Volkswagen, we have Honda in Talladega, we have Mercedes in Tuscaloosa. So we're, I think, now positioned, and the more product or sites that we can develop, the better we will be in order to attract new companies and new jobs to Fort Payne. This is a program that the state began with, and the Economic Development Partnership of Alabama is handling all of it. We have Mr. Ernie Cowherd with EDPA. We've worked closely with him over probably the last two years, putting together all of this information. And I don't think he brought the packet with him, but it's about that high. We know everything that's underground, we know everything above ground, we know everything around the site, we know all the utilities, you know, all of the services that can be provided to the site. So we're very well positioned, I think, right now for future growth. And again, I'd like to especially thank Diana Goss and Pam Clay for putting a lot of this together because it's very time consuming. And also all of our utilities and Tim and Greg and fire department, everybody plays a part in this, you know, what, what can we do, what do we have, and how can we serve that site? So it has been a big partnership with everybody in the city of Fort Payne, and even outside with Farmers Telephone, because then we have a gig certified site as well. So I'm gonna turn this over to Ernie and let him talk to you about the program and the process that we went through. Also, I did, I think, provided everyone with a little booklet, and that just kind of summarizes kind of what we went through and how we developed the Advantage application and submitted it for their evaluation. So I'll turn it over to Ernie.
I did, you did. First of all, thank you for the time this afternoon. And I'd like to start by saying congratulations. The I-59 Fort Payne Industrial Park has met all of the criteria set forth by the Advantage Site Program, and accordingly has been awarded Advantage Site Designation. The efforts of the city of Fort Payne and the DeKalb County EDA highlight your understanding of the fast-paced site selection and startup processes based by industry today. Your efforts also underscore your understanding of the need to have a prepared product. The Advantage Site Committee wishes to thank and recognize your staff, engineers, and other team members for the time and resources that you've dedicated in developing the due diligence needed to receive this designation. In particular, I want to thank the local team of Jimmy Durham, Diana Goss, and Pam Clay of the DeKalb County EDA, and Cindy Burns of NADA, Ted Clem of the Alabama Department of Commerce, who served on the review team with Sean Lightland and myself from EDPA. As a little background on the program, Advantage Site is sponsored by Alabama Department of Commerce, the North Alabama Industrial Development Association, Spire Energy, which used to be Alabama Gas, Alabama Power, Power South, and Economic Development Partnership of Alabama. Staff from each organization actively works on the program, dedicating significant time to the process. To put it kind of simply, the program is an information documentation process that allows communities to show that important information on the site is readily available to prospects. And just as an example, here is the application that was turned in. It represents a lot of months of preparation and due diligence. We also have today Brooks Crocky from NADA.
Who's with us?
And he's part of the Advantage Site Team as well. Companies seeking to locate a new facility today are allowing less time for site selection and project construction, and they're demanding more information up front, information such as Phase One and geotechnical reports, water and wastewater system plans, wetlands assessments, cultural and archaeological resource studies are baseline information that is asked for by prospects today. To meet the needs of industry, our economic development community is working to designate an inventory of sites around the state with such documentation for accurately and timely project evaluation. And we're proud that the I-59 Fort Payne Industrial Park has received the Advantage Site Designation. Your site along with 55 other sites around the state are being actively marketed as Advantage Sites on the web-based Advantage Alabama Buildings and Sites Database. This database receives over 600 searches per day and is the starting point for most prospects looking at the state. Please note that through the database and other marketing methods, we are working to publicize the Advantage Site Program and the sites that receive this designation. So again, thank you and congratulations on behalf of the Advantage Site Committee. Mayor Chesser, please present your designation.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Congratulations. We're gonna give some pictures. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy Durham, for all of your hard work on that.
Thanks, girls. I'll recognize you.
Okay, moving along to ordinances and resolutions. We have Resolution 2018-01 authorizing a reimbursement agreement pursuant to the requirements of the Internal Revenue Service concerning the proposed bond issue.
This is simply a resolution that is required by the IRS prior to a bond issue. In the event that the city decides to expend funds prior to having access to the bond proceeds, we can reimburse ourselves for those expenses.
It actually goes back 60 days.
60 days, yeah.
So if we've spent money like on MapCo, the other property, that can be reimbursed back to us. I make a motion to adopt.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
I'll second.
Have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Resolution 2018-02 granting tax abatements to G2 Supply LLC.
Durham will be back to explain this.
Our attention. The mayor's got the sheet.
This is a new company. They're locating in the Jamel Building. They acquired it. G2 Supply builds pallets and customized pallets and container, I guess corrugated containers. They have a location in Coleman, but they'll be moving it here, but starting up their own company, a separate company here too. Not a big, you know, employer right now. They're gonna have about 13 jobs. And then in 2019, they're planning an addition and will be probably another 13 or so jobs. I can just say that they're probably gonna be well-paying jobs too. We ran just a brief analysis on wages, and it's gonna generate an additional five jobs outside the plant, just through direct indirect labor. These are jobs that would be at restaurants, things of that nature. But overall impact of about $5,211,000 with their sales and wages and all. So it will be generating money here. It will take a vacant building and put people in it, put people to work. I know not quite the 4,000 jobs that Huntsville has announced, but it is jobs for people. And of course, if we're like most communities now throughout the United States, it's starting to become difficult to find labor, and we're no different than everybody else. And you can tell that when you see all the help wanted signs out there. They will be investing approximately $1.2 million. And then, as I said, they will be paying pretty good wages. I can't say exactly what right now, but again, they will be generating money for our community. Of course, people will be coming in looking at products, so I think it'll have a good positive impact. You have any questions?
Are they gonna own the property?
Yes.
They are.
Yes.
Who's the principal of it?
Matt, is Matt here? Matt, come on up. I'm sorry. I forgot he was down there. I'll let you talk about the project.
Hello. Thank y'all for having me today.
You're welcome.
Appreciate Mr. Jimmy for sure.
Matt, how on earth?
What's up?
Oh, your name?
Yeah, Matt Hale. Matt Hale, yes, sir. I'm a resident here at DeKalb County. Hale, yes, sir. H-A-L-E. Originally from the Hennecker area. As Mr. Jimmy had already said, he did a very good job, stayed the basis of our company. We are looking to, we already have contracts in the works of supplying custom-made crates along with cardboard. He already said it, corrugated products to go along with that. That product is not a, it's not a, a cut, just a basic cut and dry pallet. This is a, a custom project that we're gonna be able to hone in and really get our foot in the door with some companies. And we've already got some, some projects lined up, already done some trialing on that, and looking forward to what we're, what's in the future here in Fort Payne. Like I said, it's about nine miles from my front porch, so I'm, I'm looking forward to that for sure. So if you have any questions or anything.
Do you have an operation now?
We, we have it started. We have, we have a new machine in the works right now, so everything's already been lined up as far as that goes. About $150,000 custom pallet operating machine for us. It's, it's a new project. A company out of Sulicog, Alabama is making that custom for us, yes, sir.
And they can't start until they get the abatement.
Yeah, sure. That's, like I said, everything's in the beginning stages, but we're, we're looking forward to.
Did you choose us just because your clothes, or, I mean, there has to be a need.
We primarily started, the company primarily started several years ago as a packaging distributor. And with that, we got our foot in the door with some stretch film boxes taped, things such as that. And with that, us being a locally owned company, not corporate, we, we can, we can offer, offer things and fulfill needs that companies have that, that will allow them to go the route of one-stop shop, so to speak, opposed to, it's different vendor for every, excuse me, distributor for every need they have, we can offer things such as, well, can you build us a custom crate? Yes, we can build that. And, and we are local. We're based locally. Like I said, we have a sales force and several current customers in Coleman area, but this, this is home. This is where we want to be for sure.
Glad you stayed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have the calculations on the tax?
Do you have those?
I've got them. Yeah, I've got them.
We've got a motion on the floor and a second to allow this. So all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. Authorize annual bids for fuel supplies, et cetera.
Motion to authorize annual bids.
Got a motion and a second to authorize these bids. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Number five, discussion about the old hospital site concerning, concerning demolition possibilities. I know this has been a topic of a lot of conversation.
Been going on for some time.
Yeah.
I met yesterday with the director of the Alabama Department of Economic Community Affairs, ADAC, Kenneth Boswell, and his deputy secretary, our deputy director, along with Shabira, and Nancy Robertson from Tarkog, and Lucas Blankenship. And we had a good meeting. They seem to think that they've, that we've got some good possibilities from a grant standpoint. The main thing that came out of it, in my opinion, was we can go ahead and apply for the grants without owning the property. The grants would be contingent upon us securing the property before they would be given. I've always been under the impression you had to own it before you could even apply, but they said no, that we could do that. So Shabira and Lucas are looking at CBDG block grant of what they call a big city blight and something grant that could possibly be $450,000. Then we're looking at a brownfield site grant, which could be 200. And then there was one other possibility. So there, the way they stand right now, they are exploring what possibilities we can apply for. And then once they determine that, then they'll ask us to do a resolution requesting that they make application for those grants, contingent upon us owning the property. And that's been a big concern to everybody, is the liability that exists between the time you acquire the property and you do something with it. So that takes that kind of out of the picture. We did get an estimate on if we did secure the property fencing it, and I think we can, we can put it reasonably good security for less than $15,000 fencing wise, and the fencing of, of nature that can be taken down and reused somewhere else. We got an estimate from a company that would come in and do the surveying as far as the, you know, the environmental hazards within the building, asphalt, lead, this sort of thing, somewhere less than $5,000 to make a survey. We then got an estimate from an engineering firm in Birmingham, which we feel like is way out of line of a million dollars to remove the facility. And I feel certain that we could do that. ADAC said that any of it that we could do would be applied toward our match. And I think there's a good bit of it that we can be. It's gonna depend upon what comes up on the, the environmental side of it, but assuming, I know the office space and the old castle building and some of that stuff, we could take down ourselves, and that would be a substantial, you know. Most of this grant's 30%, some 20, some 30. And there's a lot of competition. And one thing right now, the federal budget has not allocated money for the community block grants, or ARC either one. So we're gonna have to wait and see what happens with that budget, but those, those two, two items are just too important not to fund, and I really feel like that they will be funded sooner or later. Lot of the other grants, like Tony was talking about earlier today, are basically already funded, either from monies that were not spent last year or what have you. But I'm optimistic that we're gonna get something done with this. I really am.
Do we have any kind of timeframe of when we might know?
We'll try to get everything that we can, can apply for in this year, which means that it would probably be toward the end of the year before we know anything, and then next year at the earliest before we get started. So it would just take one step at a time. It's been a, a long process. That thing's been there for 25 or 30 years, and it's not going away unless we do something with it.
What about the grants? The grants? When would application need to be made?
This spring. I don't have a date on them. They'll, they'll get back with me just as soon as they decide which grants to apply for, and then we'll have to do a resolution. And then everything will have to be, you know, done before the closing date.
This is a grant that Kim can do?
No, Tarkog would do these grants.
Okay.
They'd do those. And of course, that's of no cost to us when they do it too.
Yeah, well, maybe that'll prove to be some positive. All right, moving right along. Streetlight request for the Fort Payne Masonic Lodge, 3024 Gaunt Avenue. Randy, you want to talk on this?
Yeah, they requested this, I think, twice before we filed the motion, maybe put a light there across the street on the side where the cattle joy says, "I recommend..."
No, move.
Got a motion and a second to approve that light. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have alcohol license, authorizing license changes for DeSoto Seafood and Brew's, change from off-premise to on-premise. Santa Fe Cattle Company ownership change, Eagle Express ownership change, and Rite Aid ownership change.
Alcohol committee met, oh, what was it, a week or so back?
Last week.
Last week, and approved all these, with the exception of Rite Aid. I got Rite Aid's information in the mail of Rite Aid. And it's simple, simple ownership change, nothing else changed. Walgreen purchased Rite Aid. Nothing's gonna change at the local store, it'll still go by Rite Aid.
Walgreen did purchase.
Yes.
They're gonna keep Rite Aid.
Rite Aid's name, yeah.
And keep it up.
So on the, Doc, on the seafood and brews, you guys aren't gonna do any sales for off-premise anymore, it's just on-premise?
I thought it was gonna be on and off. That's the way the state's license is. I think there'll be a two here, I mean, separate here.
What we'll do is just, we'll just, he's got a off-premise license now.
Oh.
And we'll do, like, you know, sell him on premise as well.
Okay.
But we'll be on and off-premise?
On and off, yes.
Does it not change from, it's not change from off to on, it's to change from off to off and on?
That's correct. My fault.
So all the background, is everything's already been done?
We got a motion and a second to approve these licenses. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, Mayor, you have a report for us?
There's a bill been introduced in Montgomery that a lot of us have been concerned with, and that's the, the deal dealing with Amazon. When Amazon purchased Whole Foods, it gave them a physical presence in the state of Alabama, which under current law excludes them from the voluntary sales tax collection that they've been doing. And they should go to do like everybody else. But there's a bill in Montgomery to allow them to continue doing business as they are now, which is just collecting a fraction of the tax. And I'm afraid if that bill goes through, that we'll have other big box stores like Walmart and Lowe's and anybody else that's got any wall, any internet business that has a store in Alabama. I'm gonna give them a way to get in the door to go get to this voluntary program instead of paying 10% to pay two. So I have asked Nathaniel and Steve both to look at that bill very, very carefully. The league has come in and asked some changes to be made to the bill, which I don't think goes nowhere near far enough. They wanted to raise the tax rate and a couple of other things, but what it amounts to is under the voluntary method, the money is distributed throughout the state based on population. It doesn't have any bearing on where the, the business is done or what have you, which means that what we would be collecting would be spread among every city in the county, as well as the county. And just, it's gonna cost us money any way you look at it. So that's just for a matter of your information. If you get a chance to talk to either one of them, I would urge you to, let your thoughts be known about it, because every time something comes up, it always comes up some way to cut something. I mean, it's, it's not, we're not getting anything, we're getting cut every time we get a bill going in. So anyway, that was one thing. Jimmy, did you find out whether we could, could get certification on that?
Got an email back from Dick Allen yesterday. We've gotta go through the University of Alabama, I believe it is, to get that. She gave me an email address of who to contact.
Okay, well, go ahead and contact those people, and let's find out what we have to do. What we're talking about is here a while back, we got word that we were gonna have to have an asbestos inspection on any house that we demolished or burned or what have you. And if we didn't, it's a substantial fine from ADM for doing it. And we got some bids from, from other companies that range anywhere from, I guess they average about $500 apiece for every house to look at. And if we can train somebody, maybe with the fire department or wherever, to, to do these inspections, then that would definitely save us some money. And we might could even use them on some of these building projects that we're talking about as well. I know that what I looked at online, the tuition was like $6,000. But my question was whether that allowed you to meet all requirements or what have you?
She just told me to contact the safe state at the University of Alabama.
Okay.
I've got, you've got things to do.
Hopefully, we can come up with that. That should save us some money. If we want to tear down some old houses or burn some houses for training, I hate to spend $500 apiece just to satisfy ADM.
And I wonder how long that certification lasts? Is that yearly or?
I'm sure it's a yearly thing, but there's probably just a renewal thing every first year, like, like most state licenses would be. That would be my assumption.
Well, the certification, Jimmy, does that clear us to do the demolition ourselves, or do we still have to use an outside company?
Demolition's not the issue.
That just allows us to inspect and find it.
It just allows us to, to see whether or not we've gotta bring in a, an asbestos removal company or hazardous materials removal, removal company. That's the only thing that's gonna do, is allow us to do the inspections.
No, it's just ADM, you have to tell all the paperwork and invite the inspector before we burn a house.
Right. You gotta, you gotta.
If there isn't a paper, it has to be done before.
Then you want that fire department, have any of those trained?
We probably have some of that people. We probably have to, we have to be willing to do it.
Yeah.
We should do it.
I'm sure they are. They probably have a manual reoccurrence.
And I would, I would offer that, I would suspect that there'd be other cities around the area that might use our service if we get someone certified. And Ron's group over there, they, there might be some smaller cities that say, yeah, we need your service to come certify us or to check our houses.
One other thing I wanted to mention, we, we had one of our previous meetings concerning the dog issue and the attack made it section in Gunnersville and whatever. The legislature, Nathaniel in particular, is planning on issuing some kind of bill, introducing some kind of bill that would supposedly help us with this. Right now, they don't know what that bill is. They formed a committee to come up with something. I have a feeling that it's going to be more so of a liability type bill than it will be a preventative type bill. So I, I think it'd probably be best just to hold the dog issue until we see what they introduce and how that goes. That's it.
All right, we appreciate you all coming today. Like to see if there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the council for any issue? Like to open the floor up? Anybody? Any department heads that, Tim?
I've got a couple other things. We started our grounds maintenance crew this week. I've got a meeting with Aldo tomorrow. I've got four or five projects we're gonna look at with them and see what permitting we're gonna consider. We're gonna move those crate barrels on Highway 35 and then talk to them about the clearing on the interstate to see what portion or what kind of permitting we've gotta have for that. So if y'all know anything else that we need to look at, y'all can know before tomorrow and get with them on that. And then also on the Christmas lights, I think everybody was making a list of what they liked or didn't like this past year. If y'all could get those to me, just put them in my box or get them to me, the way we'll be starting probably next month when rain days start, we'll be starting back on doing some maintenance on the Christmas lights.
Did you get with me after you get that list, possibly, and us already do a plan for next year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like for us to get together and do some kind of a plan and, that we can add to our existing lights and, and explore some other options that we can, routes that we can go.
And look at the budget for next year.
Yeah, this would be a good time if we could go ahead and do it now, that would give us enough time to get some work done before it's Christmas time. So that, that'll work. When y'all get ready to meet on that, just let.
When are we gonna take down the big banners?
They only had three left today.
Okay, good.
We didn't get as many as we thought we did. We only got 55 and split it.
Okay. Are you putting the feel-so-right ones back up?
But they owe us 20 more of that last ones that we bought.
Okay.
And I know it's way too early for most of our brains to get wrapped around this, but believe it or not, I had a call yesterday, want to know when the Fourth of July fireworks is gonna be.
I just had to have that down and Ron and I talked about that before the meeting started.
When the Fourth of July will be?
Fireworks. Fireworks.
It falls on Wednesday. Our recommendation would be to do it on Monday, July the 2nd, with the rain day being the next day on Tuesday, July the 3rd. Because it's almost time for them to submit application, because it's gonna be several months in advance. We talked about that earlier today.
Good with that?
And Murray's already wanting to start working on it.
Looks good.
I'm good with that.
Murray's good with it.
Monday the 2nd.
Monday the 2nd.
Yeah, Monday the 2nd.
Y'all not doing traffic, no traffic yet.
No, no traffic, no.
I can notice that.
Tuesday's rain day.
Yes.
Shoot them, shoot them on Monday with backup on the 3rd.
Yes.
I believe they said Rocky.
Probably somebody else.
Did they, Rocky?
That's what I was checking to see.
Any other department heads got anything?
I would like to say, I know this is the last council meeting before we lose Tanya, I'd just like to say that she will be greatly, greatly missed. And also, we're losing Victoria. Her life, they will be next week. So just wanted to say that they've been an asset to the city and they will be missed.
Very, very much missed.
Yeah, they've both gone over and beyond their actual job duties, I think, and done a really good job.
I didn't say something about that.
Thank you.
So if you see those two individuals out, be sure and tell them you appreciate their service to the city, their years of service.
I don't think we need to let them leave.
Well, I've tried every way in the world to keep them here, but it just ain't working.
I don't think, I don't think they allow chains.
Yep. I, I would like to, to, to let everybody know that, to let everybody else know, we're having our strategic plan meeting that was scheduled for the 16th, and we had to reschedule. We run into so many different conflicts of dates and times, but that is rescheduled for February the 13th at 5:30 at the Coleman Iron Building. So please tell folks to be down there. We want you to be there, we want you to get involved, we want you to ask questions. This'll be the time to do that.
And share ideas.
Yeah, because we want, we want everybody's ideas. We wanna look at the, the picture, you know, the whole big picture as a whole. We, we met with Tony at the work session before, so we wanna be able to, to look at all, everything that we possibly can look at, so.
Well, and I would just like to say, I hear a lot of rumors, none of this has been decided upon. It's just, you know, ideas at this point.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta think, and a lot of times you gotta think out loud to, to, to get moving and, and make progress. And like Lynn said, none of this has been put in stone yet, none of it has been said this is what we're gonna do. It's all, it's all talk right now. And, and our, our budget will, will, you know, determine what we can and can't do, so. Anybody else?
All right.
I move that we adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.